We will go ahead and call to order the October sixteenth, twenty twenty four special meeting of the Historic District Commission. Sarah, could you help us with roll call?
Here.
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 Down here.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Godfrey.
Here.
Here.
We have Quorum. Thank you so much, and thank you for your flexibility for not having Quorum in our regularly scheduled meetings. So we appreciate that. We have the whole family tonight. Are there any agenda changes, additions, or deletions? We're good? Okay. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes of the regular meeting held September fifth, twenty twenty four? And if so, do I have a motion to approve those? Approve the agenda. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know what you mean. I, any agenda? I do.
Yeah.
I, I ask if there were any agenda changes, additions, or deletions? Oh, we'd usually, I never remember approving the agenda. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I shall move.
Okay. A second? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? I'm sorry, Sarah. Apologize for that. Uh, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion for the September fifth minutes?
Move to approve the minutes from September fifth?
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Thank you. Um, do we have any public comments on the agenda items for tonight with a limited three minutes? Hello?
Uh, Mark Klingle, seven forty seven Water Street. Uh, my input is on one forty nine Lucy. Uh, and it's, it's only concerns is what I'm doing because saying because it is a property that's adjacent to ours. Um, the property of, that, that property already encroaches on our property on two sides. So it, it's a non-conforming property. Um, the concern I have is not so much that it's, I also have a non-conforming property right next door. And several years ago, we just wanted to change the roof. It's a flat roof. We wanted to put a pitch roof on it. Since our property was non-conforming, we were denied. Uh, that's my crux of my concerns today. There are some other ones. Because we, all else we wanted to do is put a pitch roof on a flat roof building. And we were denied because it's non-conforming. You cannot make improvements to that building. So uh, we were harmed by that same rule. And here we're adding a very expensive large addition to a house on a very small lot. Uh, that already is non-conforming and it's encroaching on the lot next door to the east and to the south. And it's already a five-bedroom home. And we're adding three more bedrooms upstairs. My concern is not so much that it's parking. I mean, we're going to, I would assume there's going to be a loss of a bedroom, but you're going from a five-bedroom home to the seven or an eight. And it's got a very small driveway room for maybe two cars. Um, and the lot is sixty-six feet wide. And the house is already sixty-three feet wide. Um, because it encroaches on our property on two sides already. So my concern is not that they're going through it. It's, I would like that same option. I was denied because my house is non-conforming. I couldn't just change the roof. I just wanted to put a pitch roof on it because it's a flat roof is prone to leaks and it's expensive to redo. So those are my concerns. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mark? Anyone else? No one online? Okay, is there any unfinished business? Not, we'll move right into new business. And the first one is one forty nine Lucy Street, uh, the addition to a principal dwelling. Um, just as a reminder, the way we organize our meeting here at the Historic District Commission is um, if you want to introduce yourself and say anything about your application as an applicant. Is that my walk-on music? Um, you can do that if there's, uh, but everything we have in front of us, we've had a chance to review the, review the agenda. Um, I'll go around the table and make sure every commissioner has the chance to ask clarifying questions or make comments. And then we'll talk as a group and then we'll make a motion at some point. So anyone like to say anything about one forty nine? Are you good? Just introduce yourself, please.
Barry Chesterman, uh, owner with my wife of one forty nine Lucy. If we are approved, I would move that perhaps Mark is able to reconsider the change to the roof on his house. I believe it's one fifty-three Lucy. And, um, we do actually have room for three vehicles. Uh, the purpose of the home addition is to have room for our family. We have four children. We have two grandchildren. And, uh, that is really the reason that we're hoping to be able to make this addition so that when everyone is here, we can stay in one home rather than renting additional homes in the area, which we had to do this summer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, Sarah, would you mind popping that application up on the screen for us? Um, maybe just the first, let's see, um, thirteen? We can see the current state. And then we can look at the renderings to show what that looks like with the addition. John, I'll start on this side. Do you have any, uh, questions about materiality, scale, anything?
Not right now. We're not going to get a presentation with the rendering from the architect I think is here.
I just asked.
Oh, you didn't, okay.
I just ask if you'd like to, you can. Okay, sure.
I don't know me. Um, let's just run through it really quickly. The house was, uh, re-sided, uh, eight years ago, which was approved by this Historical Commission at the time. That's what it looks like right now. We can keep going. That's the side, the Butler Street side on top. That's the driveway behind, well, not their driveway, but the, the what's that, the east wall? I lose my, yes. South. Okay, and we can keep going. Um, it is a non-conforming lot. Is, it's a non-contributing home. It was built in nineteen forty-two. It's approximately nineteen hundred square feet. Uh, it's neither, as you can see from the pictures, particularly contemporary, nor is it particularly colonial. It's just sort of somewhere in the middle. Keep going. We designed, or I designed rather, the upstairs to conform to the existing setbacks, which is why you can see the south side of the house is setback four feet because the existing house is not within the current setbacks at all. And the side facing Butler Street, because it's a corner lot, we went in twenty feet because the house itself is almost on the lot line as it is today. Uh, no problems in the front setback because the front is more than twenty feet off of the lot line. That would be this part here. And we can keep going. So that's just for your interest, uh, the proposed floor plan of the second floor. It's three additional bedrooms, two additional, three additional bathrooms. Utility storage, et cetera. And then so what we were proposing is the existing siding, which again was approved eight years ago, is certened. It's more of a, a, a clavard type of siding. We would use the same color, the same brand, except do shingles. The same Anderson clad windows that are now in the first floor, uh, today. And the same rule we would match. And the decking that all exists right now would stay in place. What we would like to do for the, I'm sorry, could you back up one second? We have two options. It, as you see, there's sort of a, a roof going over the front door. Because that faces north and because we're getting rid of an existing window, that's kind of a skylight. It's not a skylight exactly. It's, it's flush with the front of the house. We would like to do a polycarbonate roof, which is sort of a Plexiglas type of product. The other option, now you can keep going. That's what it looks like. Although it wouldn't be that wide. And then the next picture, we could also do, I'm sorry, you can keep going again. Uh, and keep going. Uh, we could also do a standing seam.
Metal roof for this part, which I yeah.
There's a page that also shows the top view with the metal.
And again, I realize you all do not like to make decisions. I'm just throwing both of them out there because their preference would be to do the polycarbonate roof, but if that's an absolute there it is. Okay. We have a metal roof. And that's it.
So, um, just to clarify before we go around the table and I have to start with you. Maybe always go this way first and that way on the second one, but anyone? Okay, that's okay. We are decision-making around a base of non-contributing and contributing. Not a lot that is non-conforming. So that is not our purview at the Historic District. Non-conforming, the fact that it sits on a lot line doesn't matter to us. What we look at, just so everyone is grounded in this, is, is the property contributing or non-contributing? And we would look at the scale of what's being done and perhaps we take into account where it sits on the lot and its adjacency to the other buildings around it. So I just wanted to clarify that since it's been mentioned a few times.
Yes. So materiality is all the same with the addition of this polycarbonate roof or a metal standing seam roof.
Right.
In my, and I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, but to me, the polycarbonate roof does not fit the materiality of the Historic District, non-conforming or conforming. That's my only comment.
Me, non-contributing or?
Non-contributing, that's what I mean, non-contributing or not, or contributing.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think it fits, but I, I could be wrong on that. I won't.
The Historic District guidelines do not list polycarbonate as a as a material that can be used on a roof. I also think that it could potentially be a gray area and be considered a skylight, which we are not advised to do. So I agree on that as it relates to the guidelines.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
We'll continue around this way. Russ?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for being here and, uh, unfortunately, I've got the experience of having lived in this town my entire life, so I can remember this neighborhood, uh, back before the Johnson House was built across the street, which is at the time it was built, before the Historic District actually existed, it was called a penny and a bathtub, I think is how it was described around penny amongst diamonds or whatever the term was, because it was so substantially different from what was there. Uh, small one-level cottages, which is essentially what this architecture of this house has been. Um, and around the corner, um, similar, and then of course the twisting works, which is now long gone, but the condominiums. So there's been a lot of changes in, in this neighborhood, and I think the any, any historical value to the architecture, I think, has been mostly lost just over the years, at least in terms of my memory. However, what I'm interested in here is the materiality of, there's, there's other folks on the commission that have far more experience with that. I will defer to their opinions on this. I'm looking at the scales compared to the surrounding, um, uh, structures. And, um, this is a beautiful background here, but it does not give me any sense at all how this fits with the buildings that surround it. This is something that I brought up with the, um, house that's been built at the corner of Francis and Holland, which is um, just far out of scale. That's, that's a done deal. However, here's an opportunity, at least in my mind, to think, okay, how's this actually going to, with that second addition scale of the other building around it? In my mind, it's not going to be scaled very well with the buildings around it, especially those that are down the street, down Newham. Uh, ones that also go up Lucy. Uh, it's not Lucy. Um, so I, I would, as I said during the other project, I would love to see this in scale with the buildings that are around it, for better sense of the scale that we're actually required to evaluate this side and the compatibility of the structure and the space around it with the visual or historical context of the surrounding area. The impact of the exterior of the structure and the space around it on the village and village slash rural character and contextual aesthetic of the city. I think this, at least in my mind, I'm struggling with that. I think this might not be in compliance with that standard. But again, the visuals itself don't help me kind of get past this. Does this make sense what I'm?
Understand what you're saying, yeah. Okay.
That's all.
Thank, thank you. Laura?
Uh, all great comments as usual. Um, I agree, the materiality is really not the question. I, I agree with, with John on that, with a preference towards the metal. And it was good to have that clarification on that. Um, but again, to Russ's point, you, you know, what's to the right of this in, in the real world is, is Mill Pond, if I, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
And then this is on a corner. Okay, and then so the, the buildings around it are the house across the street and more toward Lucy, because then you've got the condos down on Butler. So, um, if I've got this correct, um, so it is good to understand the scale of this with, uh, with those buildings in mind. Uh, and I don't know that I have a, a good understanding of that. Not, no concern on the, on the materials that you're using or, or the, or the goal, but, um, again, is this, is this going to sync up? And, uh, I think that's always kind of a, a good question for us to, to figure out. Appreciate your time here. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Will?
I, I don't have anything. I did have the question on the, the roof materials for the, the, the poly whatever and the other one. I think that helped. I would prefer with John that the steel roof would be more in line with what we've done in the past. And I didn't see as this, I wasn't concerned on the scale personally, so.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I agree with your materiality comment. Um, it should be consistent with the rest of the architecture and, and I, you know, I support the non-metallic or the metallic use of, of that. You know, I think that's more appropriate. Uh, the other one is the pergola. Where those two intersect, the pergola heads back towards the front of the structure and the old awning, well, the current overhang. Are those, is that pergola going to stay exactly the same or does that require modification to make that whole thing?
It's exactly the same.
Okay, so you're just leaving that alone and?
Because the overhang of the existing, it's hard to see.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
The overhang of the roof right now is no farther out than what that standing level.
And, um, I, I don't think it's in the, any of the material, but do we know the overall height of that center section compared to what that type, the, the peak is right now? Because it doesn't appear that it's getting that much taller. If you were just doing a front view.
I'm going to go out on a limb and tell you, I think it's twenty-four feet and I can't tell you what it is right now.
Okay, alright. Um, that's all I had.
Twenty-four feet from grade?
Yes.
Um, oh, yeah.
Uh, just one other question around the square footage. Uh, has this been through the zoning administration review and planning commission review for lot coverage, et cetera?
So the lot coverage isn't going to increase because obviously we're building, we're building up within the same footprint, but the floor area ratio is going to increase. And so it's, it's going to be, uh, in front of the planning commission. It was scheduled to be in front of the commission tomorrow. Unfortunately, we don't have form for that meeting, so it does require a special.
Of approval.
For that it's been.
Thanks, Lynn. Appreciate it.
And also we did pull up a map. You could just see the, the general, the, the surrounding neighborhood, obviously. Um, it was pointed out that it's a corner lot. It's three parcels. Both neighbors to the, uh, east. Uh, two stories and then behind it is a condo association. They appear to be two stories also.
Yeah, I think they're actually, I think they're three stories.
Stories.
So what we're
there, I, I'm pretty sure it's three.
Yeah, it is three.
It seems that most of the neighboring properties are two-story. I do not have a concern with this.
I don't either.
No.
Um.
And any comments?
Sure.
I, uh, Barry Chesterman again. I actually looked at all the buildings up and down Lucy, up and down Newham and around the block, the same block that we're on. And seventy-two percent of the buildings are, if we count the condos as two, one is on, uh, Butler, one is on, uh, Water. Seventy-two percent of the buildings are three or two stories. So it would actually be, one would think, more compliant with the overall, uh, region than a one-story building, since only twenty-eight percent of them are one-story.
So I, I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with the massing or the scale with the second story. I think what comes into your statistic, though, isn't about the number. It's about the scale of, of, uh, regardless of the height, how does it fit in with its neighbors? I think to the point you were bringing up about one of the other properties. So for me in this view, uh, as one commissioner, um, even with this addition on it, it's far less than this three-story condos behind it, and I think it's going to be less than Mill Pond beside it. You have what's across the street to our, to my left as I look at with a screen my way, and you have what's directly across the street from it. Um, which is kind of a lot of green space. So that's okay. So I don't, I don't think Russ is wrong in wanting that, that correlation. I don't think we can require our applicants to have renderings that show that in scale to the neighboring properties to go to that expense. Um, I think we have to walk the property and always just look at it. But if we can't vote for it because we can't have that perspective in our head or we can't visualize it, I think that's the prerogative of a commissioner. But I, I, I think from walking it multiple, multiple times, and if it is twenty-four, even if it's twenty-six, I think it's less than what's immediately on its block. My, my one thing that I would ask us to think about um, is we always, for a non-contributing property, our goal is to make the non-contributing property not more non-contributing. And there is a lot going on on this house. So I'm actually not in favor of the polycarbonate and I'm not in favor of the standing seam because that's just one more ornament on that Christmas tree that I don't think we need. Uh, I'd really like to see it be the same roof material as what's on there to not introduce one more thing since you're introducing more mass. The, I remember when this property came before us for the, for the deck, um, and the railings. And we sort of had a hard time working through that because of adding more to the, uh, to sort of the streetscape, the view from the curb. And so I'd be really cautious. I think you've kept it quiet um, in the design of the second floor. But I don't think that overhang being in yet another material keeps it quiet. So I would not be in favor of that. That's one voice.
So in discussion with, um, in consultation with Luke, we went through the zoning requirements and discovered that the zoning requirements, and this is well after we made this application to the historic commission. The zoning, the zoning requirements actually would allow us to move everything closer to Butler, similar to the condos, because they, the zoning requirements, I don't remember the exact language, but if, um, if forty percent of the homes on that side are a certain distance from the lot, then one can also move closer to the lot line on Butler, which is, because we're a corner, that's two sides. If we were to do that, I'm sure we would need to come before the historic commission again, additional costs for our architect. Um, but that would allow us to actually leave the peaked roof at the front with the higher window at the front exactly as it is today. It would mean moving the rest of the building further over towards Butler Street, but it would allow us to keep the existing look at the front of the house, and we could keep it the same square footage that we have today as well.
I, um, we, we can't tell you what to do with that. Um, but as I look at your application, again, I'm one, one voice at this table. I, I personally think one gift that you've given us is getting, getting rid of that peak.
Ah, okay.
I, I think you, you've cleaned it up with this. Um, so in my example of making it, not making it more non-contributing, I think you've actually really helped it with the design and what you're trying to do. So I wouldn't be a fan of that, but, but if that's what you want to do, I mean, by all means, come back and it's, it's there. So it's not like we're going to ask you to take it away.
Right. The, the reason for that is that there is a, um, a vaulted ceiling in that room back there, and we would have to, we have to get rid of the vaulted ceiling inside the living room, uh, which again, I don't believe is within the historic commission's purview, but
Right.
Um, but obviously it's nice to actually have a vaulted ceiling, but.
I feel like your current design really
It's a mission.
cleans up the, you've really cleaned up the out, the outside, um, the exterior. I, I was simply referring to the added materials on that, that overhang that I don't think help you. But back to your design and what you're asking for, I do think you're improving the property and it, it's successful and aesthetically. Uh, I think the question will be for the commissioners and if we put this to a vote, is how we feel about, uh, the scale in relationship to the neighboring properties and if we're adequately able to determine that in our minds as we vote.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah.
So in the, I, I quickly, I'm the newest member. I quickly reread the guidelines again and then doing this. So if it's a non-conforming.
Non-contributing.
Non-contributing. Do you have to, this is a question and then a comment. It does state that asphalt shingles are, um, encouraged if you're not able to use a natural material to replace, right? Nowhere does it say metal can be used, but I do understand that when it's non-contributing, you want to make it look, you want to differentiate versus try to blend in, right? So would metal be appropriate in this case?
So.
Given that, does that make sense what I said?
Yeah, let me, let me take it away from this application for a second to your question. Um, because it's a two-parter. One is, um, the contributing versus non-contributing. Um, I think your, your asphalt roof, uh, part that you're reading in the guidelines is accurate. Guidelines like that from the Secretary of Interior or Department of Interior um, are usually for areas that have a lot of slate roofs or natural material where asphalt is discouraged in favor of na- um, natural. I think we've passed that in this district where asphalt is okay and we frequently approve it. Um, same with metal. I don't think that's actually a non-contributing versus contributing conversation. There's been times when there's been a contributing structure and there's been a, a new addition put on that contributing structure and you want to differentiate new from old. And maybe a metal roof is a perfect way to do that. Um, so I think there's, this is no indictment against metal roof. I just don't think for this one person's opinion that I, I think it adds too much, um, versus not being the right material. So I think that's a, it's a good clarifying question.
But just to follow up with Megan's question, I think the next logical thing maybe you're thinking, I'm thinking is it's their choice if they want to use metal or asphalt. We're discouraging the polycarbonate. Um, I think that's clear, but we can't tell you what to use. And Tim gave an opinion.
That's right.
And we, we may, as a group, may not all agree with that or not, but I think it's one of those two things that you can use, not the polycarbonate. Does that make sense?
We can make a motion, um, as it's submitted with polycarbonate or metal. Um, since you've asked for that, or we could make the motion, if the applicant requests it, to change it to asphalt. But you're
Or it could be asphalt or metal. Skip the polycarbonate. That could be the motion.
Correct.
Right.
That's right.
Well, I think we make the motion to approve with the asphalt or, or the metal, not the polycarbonate, right?
Yeah. Uh, yes, if someone would like to make that motion, that's fine. And also make that motion. Consider the way you're voting based on, I mean, maybe we should talk more about the scale. If, if, if people can get in their head what the scale is from walking by and looking and understanding the properties, great. If your vote is based on wanting to see the context of that, um, that's fine, too. I just don't know where everyone's going to land on that. So feel free to make a motion.
It really shouldn't be part of the motion. Somebody should just say they don't. It really shouldn't be part of the motion. Somebody should just say they don't approve. Right? The, the motion shouldn't include that, should it?
Okay. Unless we all feel strongly.
We've only heard that one person feels strongly.
Yep. So if someone would like to make a motion.
I will, I'll try. I move to approve the second-story addition in accordance with the plans and details submitted within the application materials. Approval shall be, approval will include the use of either asphalt or metal roof. Do I say not the poly? On the porch.
What about the scaling?
I'm fine with the scaling.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, yeah.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes, opposed?
No.
Thank you. You're all set. Thank you for coming in today, and thank you for working with us.
Thank you.
Always good to see you, Jeffrey.
Okay, our next application is two twenty-nine Francis Street, replacement doors, deck, and concrete framework.
Hi there.
My name's Liz Anderson, two-two-nine Francis. And if you've been here a little while, we were here in two thousand six and got the original approval for the existing layout. And basically, we're looking to replace the existing deck and the foundations for the side entries. If you had a chance to go out there, you can see that it's rotting. You know, no, no surprise to anybody that lives in the historic area. So it's using, no changes to the, to the layout at all. The only change really would be with the back patio door, and that was in item, was it five? Yep. Replace back patio doors with a single door. So that would be the main change. I saw Luke's comments, and I do have some highlighted copies that show where the deck is. I don't know if you accept those.
We have, we have. I think we have them in our packet. Thank you.
All right. They weren't, they weren't highlighted to show, so the highlighted areas.
Okay.
I'm sure you've seen enough of the scribblings that you can figure it out.
Okay.
But I have clarification if you need it.
Thank you.
So yeah, so that's the existing deck, replacing with concrete maintenance. You cannot see really that deck from the street. There's a wrought iron fence in front of it, and of course, plantings. With the front inside entry, the posts that are supporting the roof would stay. It's just the material. And then for fence, be dog-eared fence, replacing what's there, and the wrought iron would stay in front.
Terrific. Thank you for the overview. Megan, we'll start on your end this time. Any questions or clarifying comments?
I had a question. I was trying to decipher yours, the middle.
Yes.
The red papers that will be removed and replaced with the concrete patio or side, I'm sorry, sidewalk connecting to the back sidewalk.
Yes.
Could we, could we go to those pictures as we go through it? Because it is not clear, and I think it would help if we could go through them when you're and yeah, you're, when you're talking. Yeah, there's a
Get it up there while we're asking.
Yeah, we could, that, because it's hard to follow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can share here, yeah.
Maybe if you just step us
Yeah.
Through, step us through the one through six that you had on your project description, because it, it seems like that would help. Sorry to interrupt, Megan.
No, I appreciate.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, back deck.
So let's go, here, I'll just, number one is replace existing back deck with concrete. All dimensions would remain the same.
Yep. So there's the, the back deck right here, the top two pictures, left and right, and it should be another picture that shows more of that back deck. Right there. Those four pictures are the back deck.
So that's completely removed and replaced with concrete?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to be the flat of the current concrete? Okay.
Yeah, it won't exceed the twelve inches. I think that's why you said, Luke, it can't go higher than twelve inches.
Okay. Wasn't there a step that goes, well, you're going to have to replace that with a step or something, because you got to get down to the concrete now, right?
If it's, if it's only twelve inches, it'll be twelve inches, and then one, they're not going to be a step, it'll be just one, you know, step down to
Oh, you walk out the door and it's a drop to the concrete?
You walk out the, yeah, you walk out the door, be one step down onto the pay, onto the concrete, but then off of the deck be one step down to the walkway.
Okay, two, okay. Got it. All right, next one was replace front landing with concrete to match deck.
Yep, so right there on the left side, that would be the front entry. Down on the bottom, you can see that there's a step going up to that right now. So pretty common in the area to have either a brick or concrete entryways.
So that stays the same, and then those red tiles get concreted in?
Right.
Okay.
And the pillars of this
Everything else stays the same, is that correct?
Yeah, everything else.
All right.
It'll kind of, if you see the highlighted area, it'll just kind of swing back around or through the garden.
Okay. That was, that's the replace side landing with concrete to match deck, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next one is replace, let's do that one last. That one, one says replace back and side property fence. There's no detail on that.
And that
That I saw. Okay. And it's, it replace existing, right?
Right.
Similar, very similar.
Yeah, it's very similar. So what do you fence right now?
Same height?
Same height, yep.
All right.
Does the fence go just alongside the property to the west, or is it along that plus on the back?
It's along the side and the back, and then up the neighbors. He replaced the actual adjoining to my neighbor.
The birdhouse?
To the left.
Stephanie and Kevin's house?
Yes, yep. He replaced.
And does that fence include where you drive in? There's some mixed surfaces of screening and so forth. Does it go on that surface as well, the one that you're looking at for a street?
That would be the wrought iron fence, and I noted that in the paper I just handed out. We were going to maintain the same wrought iron fence.
So it's the wrought iron that is already existing and standing there?
Yes.
Replacing it like for like, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, it's replaced.
Like for like.
Okay. All right. Then replace back patio doors with single door to repair it. That's those double doors?
Yes.
You have the cut sheet.
Okay, and there is a cut sheet? Replace side doors to match back patio door?
Same, same spuck.
Right, yep.
Okay. And replace sidewalk from side steps to back deck with matching concrete.
So that's that, like, top picture there, the sidewalk coming out from the bricks. So the bricks would stay, and that concrete would be replaced.
Okay. Like for like, okay, okay.
That was it.
Thanks for all, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Megan, let me circle back to you. Did, did that answer your question going through those?
Yeah.
And any, any other comments or?
Not at this time.
Okay, Russ?
No, thank you, Liz, for being here this evening. So just, is there a reason you're doing this? Is this just to?
It's, it's rotting. If you walk on it, it's bouncy. Yep. Even though it has been staying by me for the last eighteen years, every year. It makes it look really good when you do it, but by this time of year, it starts looking pretty bad.
Yeah, it was very interesting in the comments from the consultant that it was a, I don't know, maybe it was Luke or the consultant said that. Interesting that it's not a contributing structure because of its age.
I totally agree.
Yeah, so. And it's interesting because of what you're proposing, Liz. I, I thank you for walking us through this. It's been very helpful to me, and the materials I have no issue at all with. I think about my house, which is a non-contributing structure, when we raised it off to replace our, our our foundation, the original house had cement, had a cement porch. And when we lifted the house and replaced it, we replaced it with wood, and I am thinking back, why in the world were we ever allowed to do that? Because it's just totally out of sync with So in other words, I think the direction you're moving is in the right direction in terms of appearance, in terms of what I've experienced in the neighborhood, too. So I wish I had some of the cement you're putting in, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I have no further questions. I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Yeah, no, no issue at all. Appreciate your coming forward with the drawings. Very helpful, and I have no, no issue with it. Thanks for taking my chicken scratch. Appreciate it.
Well?
No questions.
John?
Just one question, but I agree wholeheartedly that concrete is a better fit for the area. And I really appreciate that you're cleaning up and adding continuity to the property. I just had one question on the porch that had the stones under it. Is the, I don't know if it's the next slide, is the concrete, I assume it's going to go on, in every area that there's going to be concrete, it's going to go all the way down to the ground?
It'll, well, it'll be, that will also have the step out, and then it'll be twelve inches, so whatever found
Step down from the door
Yes.
To one level, and then one
One more step.
Step down.
Yeah.
So we're not going to see under it or anything.
No.
Okay. That's all.
Keith, anything else from? I don't have anything else to add. One bit of commentary is, I think to the point Russ brought up, I'm really surprised this is non-contributing versus contributing. Because the house is so it, it, it's so intact
Right.
From what it should be. So I, I guess as a comment for commissioners, a lot of times when an application comes before us, if something is non-contributing and should be called contributing at some point in its process, or reversed, that app, we do do that. We have done that. It's a normal thing for us to do. So if you came back and wanted to alter windows or alter something major on this house, I wouldn't be surprised that we would have the contributing versus non-contributing conversation. Even though it's listed as non-contributing right now, because you have such a lovely just intact historical space that we would want to celebrate that versus changing in a way that can't be reversed, so.
Right.
It's more of an editorial.
Yeah, even though it is not contributing, you're making it more contributing by the changes you're making right now.
Which is, which is good with us, because we want to keep
Yeah.
That feel of the house, and I was told it was nineteen oh one
Yeah.
Is the, what I
Yeah. It has its architectural integrity.
Appreciate you being a good steward of that. Thank you.
Yeah, we love it.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the application for two twenty-nine Francis Street as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? John?
Thank you. Feel free to stop by.
Any more discussion?
Sorry.
All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes, opposed? Okay.
I can power wash every year.
There you go. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Feel free to stop by and take a look at.
Yeah. Walk by all the time.
Thank you. Bye, thank you.
Village Square Park is our third and final new business item tonight. Anyone? Are you presenting that?
Can, if you'd like me to. We actually do have Ryan.
Oh, Ryan's on the phone, sorry.
On video, so if you want to take it away, Ryan.
Awesome. I didn't see, I thought that was like we were using your computer or something, Ryan. I didn't think you were lurking in the background.
Lurking, I love, I love it. So, no, I don't want to miss an opportunity to attend a great historic district commission meeting, so. Although, my first from, well, maybe not my first from home, maybe though. So, but good evening, commissioners. I, I, I trust all of you have read the, the pack and materials, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. I'm just going to open this up for us versus being formal about the since it's a light application.
I don't have any questions. We're just replacing the benches that were there and putting them right back where they were with maybe new cement pads or something.
They're not exactly in the same spot.
Oh, they're not exactly.
But they're pretty close.
Yeah, so the, the, the image that we have on page forty-two shows the old playground. The benches, I believe, were on the north side will not, will not be placed there. Everything will be on the south side. That's my understanding.
And I presume it's because it's too close to the
Yes.
property line.
Yep, so essentially, yeah, so essentially what you see in the picture on page forty-two, those back benches, the two, I don't know if there's the third one, but those essentially will be brought to the south side, be five pads for.
So there's going to be a total of four?
Five.
Five? Yeah, because I saw the pad pre four. Yeah, there's one, two, three, four.
You go all the way to the bottom.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Then it makes sense.
All right. And I think just to be clear, we're reviewing the benches. Full stop.
There's pictures of them sitting up by the DVW garage, collecting leaves, so. Awaiting the replacement.
Does anyone have additional questions about this? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll move to approve the location of the concrete pads and benches as shown in the application for the Village Square Park.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Laura? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes, opposed? Thank you all. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
You too. Luke, do we have any administrative approvals or updates that we should know about?
We don't have any administrative approvals. I do want to say thank you for attending the special meeting. That's, you know, good. And also, as, as personally receives complaints, and specifically complaints about seating, I'm very happy that we got that last one.
Yeah, it's great. It's good to put the final, final touches on the park.
Absolutely.
Is there any communication for us, from anyone? Are there any more public comments? Yes.
Hello.
Helen Baldwin, seven eight seven Manchester. As the Chair of the Parks and Public Works Committee, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for approving the park benches. I agree with Luke. I've heard nothing but, love the playground. Where can I sit? My legs are tired and I got little grandbabies, so I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate all of you very much, and have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Are there any commission comments?
Just a question on when will the benches be installed?
Oh, I, I don't know if I know that. Tell my, oh, his, Ryan.
You think he's gone, but he's not.
The lurking continues, but hey, there's, there's a benefit, right? So we have a concrete contractor that we use for sidewalk replacements that's, that lined up to do the the concrete pad before the end of the month, so you can do that in the next couple of weeks.
Good, thank you. Fast approaching.
Any other commission comments?
There have been no staff approvals in the past couple of weeks?
Not that I, that was, there was some on the last, the last time we had a meeting, we went through some administrative approvals.
There was a property that we approved that's been under construction for about two years. And I noticed a big load of concrete blocks in the driveway, and I don't know what they're for, so I wondered if there was some kind of approval for a new porch or something.
What property was that?
Our former commission member, Dan.
Oh, Dan.
Doug Butler.
Yeah. Yeah, so you're cup, been under construction for a couple of years thing, though, I think's, as long as there's continuing work following the approval.
I didn't mean, I was just referencing the property.
Oh, just like
I don't remember anything with concrete blocks
Oh.
or a portrait built, but I could be wrong, so.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
I didn't know if he came.
Definitely something.
Would you, would you might just like take a look back, and if there's, I'm sure there's
I thought he was nearing completion, and all of a sudden, there's something new going on.
He would have known to apply if there was a new element, I would think, but it's, it's good to, to take a look.
The worst thing is to, you know, have somebody redo something.
Well, and I think to the point of our last applicant, or whatever street that was. She mentioned, like, this was previously approved in two thousand six. Like, a lot of applicants don't know that that's a one-time approval, and it's good for, like, you have to sort of start within the year, so it's a good reminder for Dan, maybe he didn't know. Any other commission comments? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Okay. Russ, Russ and Laura.
Russell.
All in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate you making the special meeting work. Thank you.
You very much. Thank you.